And thank you for coming to our meeting today. Members of the public wishing to address the city council on items appearing on this agenda are advised to indicate their interest in doing so by submitting a speaker card to city staff for proceeding to the podium one by one at the time an item is considered. Members of the public wishing to address the city council on items not appearing on this agenda may do so during item five. Each speaker will have the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes, once per agenda item unless otherwise allowed by city council. Speakers are requested but not required to identify themselves, both on any applicable speaker cards and in comments or testimony. Speakers are advised that their names and any information submitted on speaker cards or otherwise provided in writing to the city may be disclosed or become a matter of public record. No speaker should expect privacy of such information. So, Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Connors, councilmember Moore.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem McCary.
Present.
And Mayor Horn.
Here. Okay, a pledge of allegiance. Would you... Would Dorothy, would you stand up and give, do the pledge of allegiance for us, please? If you're not comfortable, that's okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We come to presentations and ceremonial matters. It's Family Caregivers Month in November, and would you read the proclamation, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Laguna Woods Family Caregivers Month, November 2025 proclamation. Whereas every day in homes across the country, individuals with chronic or terminal illnesses, functional impairment, or disabilities receive compassionate care and support from family members and loved ones. And whereas, family caregivers play an essential role in ensuring the health and well-being of those most in need, managing medications, doctor appointments, and balancing work and home. And whereas, family caregivers provide a vital lifeline of connection and hope to loved ones during challenging and uncertain days, devoting immeasurable time, energy, and resources. And whereas, family caregivers spend their days caring for others while balancing the responsibilities of their own lives, including employment and raising children. And whereas, caregiving can be overwhelming, and with the responsibility of family caregivers growing every year, it is important to encourage and support family caregivers as they carry out this important work. Now therefore it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim November 2025 as Family Caregivers Month in the City of Laguna Woods in recognition of the selfless sacrifices made by loved ones to care for one another, dated this 19th day of November 2025.
Thank you. Is anyone, would anyone from the public like to say anything about this proclamation? If not, we'll go to council. Go ahead, Anna.
I just, I'm so grateful that the city is giving this proclamation for Family Caregivers Month because in our community, it's so much needed to have caregivers, to keep families together. And oftentimes, in the village, sometimes we, people may not have extended family. And so when a caregiver comes in to provide care, they oftentimes sort of blend in to be part of the family. So I think it's really great for us to recognize family caregivers, and if anyone watching this or providing care, we appreciate you and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Yeah, I've been a family caregiver, and I know we have probably hundreds of people in the village who are caring for spouses or loved ones. And it has such demands, such physical demands, and intellectual demands, just in terms of juggling a doctor's appointments and Medicare forms and everything else that goes with that. And of course, the emotional strain of watching a loved one go through such a difficult time. So I'm glad that we're recognizing this and sending out our support to all the family caregivers in our...
Thank you. Carol?
Yes, I think, obviously, we know people around us, and we, most, many of us, if not most of us, have experienced these, seeing a person in your family decline, so I agree. Watching them decline is tough, but in a way, you're seeing it in yourself too, although not as readily. And when you see it in your loved one, particularly losing a skill, it's tough. It's very difficult. And I applaud those people, and I have experienced it, I think most of us here have. You need a break from time to time. It's healthy for you and for the person you're taking care of, so recognizing that people need those breaks and helping them is an outstanding benefit that you can provide to someone. Thank you.
Thank you. There are over 43 million caregivers caring for spouses, parents, grandparents, disabled children. It can be wonderful, exhausting, rewarding, overwhelming, and frustrating, all at the same time. As a spouse, this is a journey, a last journey taken together, knowing your loved one will never be better than they are today, but having to find joy in those moments that you can, remembering it's the disease and not the person. The anticipatory grief of losing one piece at a time, leaving them, so making each moment in the here and now a treasure. Everybody wants to age in place, in their home, as long as they can, in their community. So I'm really glad that we did this proclamation today. So will someone like to move it?
My second?
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Public comments on non-agenda items. About public comments on non-agenda items, this is the time and place for members of the public to address the city council on items not appearing on this agenda. As a reminder, each speaker will have the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes unless otherwise allowed by the council. Please note that pursuant to state law, the city council is unable to take action on items not appearing on this agenda, but may ask clarifying questions of the speaker. Engage in brief discussion and refer items to city staff and/or schedule items for consideration at future meetings. Do I have anyone that, oh, here we go. Public comments is now open. We have Vicki. Would you like to come up, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Vicki Johnson, Laguna Woods resident. In 2024, the Orange County Power Authority presented to Laguna Woods, and after several months, discussion of OCPA was tabled. Since then, OCPA has lost money and raised rates. So here's an update. Last month in October, OCPA raised its electricity rates 13 percent, OCPA's largest rate hike by far, raising the average residential bill by some $10 a month. OCPA did not inform its customers. An Irvine city councilman and founding OCA board member called OCPA's rate hike predatory and unjustified. The OCPA board can raise their rates anytime, as the ease rates are highly scrutinized and regulated. OCPA has been losing millions of dollars a month, a $15 million loss in the last fiscal year, and projected $30 million loss for the current fiscal year. OCPA has set these, has offset these losses by drawing down half its reserve, putting present and potential OCA members, cities at risk. OCPA was formed to be cleaner and greener than SCE. It has its own contracts, its own cost structure. But two out of the three OCPA plans cost more than SCE, $40 per year more for one, $70 per year more for the other one. The cheapest priced plan is just a lure. It's only one or two dollars a month cheaper than SCE. OCPA's business model is to upsell a city into a plan that costs more than SCE. Every resident is put into OCPA by default. So far, member cities will have paid tens and millions, tens of millions more in aggregate to OCPA than they would have to SCE. So OCPA's not proved to be cheaper than SCE. It's not more affordable, and it's losing every month, money every month, since last July. For these reasons and others, I recommend the council put off consideration of OCPA for another couple years. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. The next item, the next speaker is Mike. How do you pronounce your last name? I'm sorry.
Rao.
Rao, okay. Rao, okay.
There you go. Good for you. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Mike Rao, Laguna Woods resident. I've provided an OCPA greenhouse gas emissions handout to the council. It looks like this. Please review it later. Every year, the California Energy Commission mandates greenhouse gas emissions reporting. The data for 2024 was released last month, October 25th, so OCPA emissions can be compared with Edison's. The greenhouse emissions for OCPA's Basic Choice was nearly twice that of Edison for 2024, 942 units for OCPA versus 515 for Edison. That means the greenhouse emissions for OCPA's Basic Choice was nearly twice as high as Edison for 2024. OCPA is buying dirtier power than Edison for Basic Choice. All of OCPA is now on the Basic or Smart Choice plans. Irvine switched to Basic Choice to save just a dollar or two per month on an average bill, but OCPA didn't warn Irvine that emissions could be higher, much higher, than Edison's. The Smart Choice plan costs an average resident $40 per year more than Edison, but in 2024, Smart Choice emissions were just 20 percent lower than Edison, despite costing $40 more than Edison. Was Smart Choice worth every resident and business paying $40 per year more for only slightly cleaner energy than Edison provided? The handout shows OCPA's worsening emission trends for Basic and Smart Choice for 2022, '23, and '24. OCPA is going backwards. These worsening trends indicate OCPA is failing its environmental mission. OCPA isn't showing these trends in its recent sales pitches to cities. It's good for you and the council to be informed about OCPA's worsening emissions. It's good you didn't choose to join last year. Thank you, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, up next, or does anybody else would like to make a public comment? Seeing non-public comments is closed. Okay, we go to the city treasurer's report. Liz?
Good afternoon. The city treasurer's report as of October 31st, 2025. Cash and investments as of October 31st ended at $13,778,610. The general fund cash and investments, operating cash and investments ended at $5,995,281, and general fund reserves are at $4,651,600. The special revenue funds had an ending balance of $3.1 million. Cash and cash equivalents had an ending balance of $525,338. Pulled money investment accounts, which includes life and camp, ended at $6.6 million, with life having an ending balance of $3,48,634, and camp at $3.6 million. This represents 48.41 percent of total cash and investments. And investments in CDs had an ending balance of $6.5 million, and this represents 47.78 percent of total cash and investments. This totals at $13,778,610. The city's trust funds as of October 31st, with other post-employment benefit trust account, had an ending balance of $159,027, with a net gain of $1,237. And the pension liability trust account had an ending balance of $313,762, with a net gain of $2,542. I think I skipped a, yes, I did, a slide. So going back to notable activities in October 2025. There was a transfer from the life account to the city's checking account for $750,000, and this was made for cash flow purposes. And we had two CDs, we purchased two CDs at $245,000 each, one for a 12-month term at 3.9 yield, 3.9 percent yield rate, and the other one, a 60-month term at 3.75 percent yield rate. At this time, we will receive any public comments.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on our treasurer's report? Seeing none, is there any council comment on our city treasurer's report? Seeing none, we will receive and file. Thank you very much.
If we could, if we could just take a motion to receive and file.
Oh, a motion? Is there, do I have a motion to receive? Thank you. Okay. It's been moved to the seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Quarterly report. I can't hear you. Okay, we move to the consent calendar.
We have one more. This month is the first of our quarterly treasurer's reports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the fiscal year.
Yes, so this is the quarterly financial report for the first quarter of the fiscal year 25, '26. So as of September 30th, 2025, revenues ended at $916,866. This is 10 percent of revenues budgeted that have been received. The general fund's three main revenue sources for the first quarter were cannabis business taxes, development processing fees, and sales taxes. With cannabis business tax being the largest revenue source, we received $280,886, which represents two months received. And development processing fees was the second largest, with $226,175 revenues received as of September 30th. As a reminder, these are charged to recover cities' reasonable cost of providing building and related services and do not represent profit. And sales tax was the third largest, at $164,174, which represents only one month received, because it's two months in arrears. The first substantial revenue for property tax will be received in January. Total expenditures for the general fund were $1.6 million, and these are in line and as expected with the budget as of right now. Transfers out to senior mobility fund and capital projects funds were $2.2 million, and the fund balance thus far is $8.3 million. Special revenue funds had revenues ending at $220,766. The majority of revenue sources received for the first two months of the quarter have been received, and then the third month of the quarter will be received in October. Expenditures ended at $213,771, which is only 7 percent of budget expenditures. Transfers in from the general fund totaled $406,052, and this was to subsidize the senior mobility program. Fund balance as of September 30th is $2.8 million. The capital projects fund so far has $0, but as of, in October, there was interest income allocated to the capital projects fund, and that ended at $28,783. Expenditures thus far were $20,310. Projects are underway and in early stages of designing and engineering. Transfers in from the general fund totaled $1.8 million to fund various capital projects during the current fiscal year. Fund balance is at $3 million. Interest income received in the first quarter for all funds totaled $124,298. Additional details for all funds are included in the quarterly financial report, which is included in the agenda packet.
Okay.
At this time, we will receive any comments.
Any public comment? Vicki? Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry.
I haven't followed real closely what's happening with this, it seems like a huge cannabis revenue. Is it earmarked for a special thing like the senior mobility? So what's happening with the cannabis revenue into the general fund, and can it be assigned to a particular expense that we know is popular, like the senior mobility?
It goes into our general fund and can be applied.
I, I would like to make a quick comment if I could. I think that the city manager's recommendations have been excellent to apportion the funds to those areas that need apportionment, and I'm sure he's going to speak to what he's chosen. It has been wise, the decisions that I think he's made. You want to go ahead and comment on that?
Happy to. So the city's general fund, we don't typically assign specific revenue to specific expenditures, so the general fund takes property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, cannabis business tax, it puts it all into one bucket, and then we assign it to various priorities that are included in our budget. So it does, among other things, go towards the senior mobility program, because as Liz just mentioned, there's a transfer from the general fund out to the senior mobility program. So it's safe to say that the cannabis business tax has helped to make that possible. It's also helped to make a project that we're going to be talking about at the next meeting possible, which is a forthcoming public safety grant program that will make certain monies available to the HOAs and other private entities for targeted public safety purposes. Things like that have been made possible because of the additional revenue, but I don't want to mislead. It's not that cannabis revenue comes in through one door and leaves through another. It's all part of the larger general fund.
Okay, thank you. Council comments?
I just want to point out, as you said, the cannabis business tax is a substantial revenue source for us, and it enables us to do many things that we would not otherwise be able to do. And as the city manager said, we'll discuss one of those large expenditures soon. But what happens is that our council spent a lot of time thinking about this, and eventually we decided to bite the bullet and take the chance and go for it, whereas all the other cities in South Orange County were saying, not me, not me. So the result is that people come from all over South Orange County, and they buy their products here, and they pay their taxes here, and that goes to subsidize, to pay for many of the services that we provide for our members. So overall, it's been definitely a win-win for us.
We're definitely reaping the rewards. Anything from overhead lights for pedestrians, to senior mobility, to HOA funding, public safety funding, it goes, it's funding a lot of things, and I'm sure in the future, it will go even further. I mean, we're able to do things with our parks that we haven't been able to do. But there's a lot of things that as you, the city is not operating on a shoestring like it was before, and looking for ways that we could save money. Now we're able to do things for the city that we had been unable to do before. Okay. Okay, so any other comments on...
I had a comment. Actually, the largest income is from property tax, of course, substantially more, and it's, as we know, as prices are going up, and at least eight to 10, probably, you can tell us, is it more than 10 percent turnover? Jim, do you think now, in third, or do you know? It's about eight to 10 percent. So eight per 10, 10 percent every year, that price goes up, and the property tax goes up to that, even though it's still the property, property 13, you're still winding up with huge increases in the property tax, and I think we ought to be aware of how that's working. And I wanted to ask Chris and ask Liz, do you have any idea, because houses on my street, I can't even believe the prices, I probably couldn't afford to buy my own house, and I think you might be finding that too, do you have any prediction on what you see that you're getting, because it's going to be up?
So are, we contract with a third party for property tax estimation and forecasting services. Those assumptions are built into the budget, and then they're updated annually. So the figures that you see in the budget are the figures that we expect. We do expect some growth, but there isn't, we have not yet seen like a significant spike. We've been, and we've talked about this before, we've been really fortunate that property tax has been steady. It grows, it doesn't grow by any huge significant amount, but it goes up, and it goes up steadily. So that's more of what we see. That's not to say, there are some years, if you look at the budget detail, there are some years where you see things that sort of resemble spikes, and those are from large transactions. So like if an apartment building is sold, right, there's a one-time significant increase in the reassessed value of the property, but then also the document recording fees associated with it. With residential properties, even though they're selling higher than they might have in the past, the overall value is, we have a lot of units, we have a lot of buildings, and so it, to see a more significant spike, we'd really have to see a larger turnover year to year. So I think what you're observing, though, is part of what allows that steady climb to continue to happen.
But you, you do, we do depend on it. We know what's going up.
Yes, absolutely.
And it is a significant, it's the largest part of our budget, income revenue. And what I wonder about in the future are these people with those taxes. I think, wow, you're going to be paying your property tax on a million two and a million three? Wow. I think that's going to be a challenge, be interesting. I hope it all works out. Anyway, thank you.
Yep. So we'll take a motion.
I so move.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved in the seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so consent calendar. About the, all items appearing on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or city staff requests that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and consideration of action. Members of the public may address the city council on items appearing on the consent calendar regardless of whether an item is removed for separate discussion and consideration of action. Would anyone like to speak to anything on the consent calendar or remove it from the consent calendar? Seeing none, can I get somebody to move the consent calendar?
Move this consent, the consent calendar?
Thank you. Moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Six. So we get to public hearings. California Building Standards Code and local amendments. We're going to receive staff report.
All right.
If there's another one.
So this is the first of three public hearings for the day. This one, I would venture to guess, will probably be the quickest. We had a more extended presentation on October 15th. At that meeting, the city council approved the introduction and first reading of the three ordinances included in today's agenda packet. You also opened the public hearing. You'll be resuming that public hearing today. There'll be an opportunity for additional public testimony. And then after that, public hearing is closed, we will be recommending adoption of the three ordinances. As a reminder, those three ordinances would adopt the 2025 California Building Standards Code by reference. We do this primarily out of administrative ease. The code takes effect January 1st irrespective of what the city council does, but we do update our municipal code accordingly. So that's part of the recommended action today, as is adopting local amendments that have been recommended by the Orange County Fire Authority to both the 2025 California Fire Code and the 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code. In addition to the presentation at the October meeting, there's a variety of documents, all of which were included in that agenda packet as well, included in your agenda packet today, that itemized those local amendments, explained some of the rationale for it. And we do have a representative from the fire authority present today if there are any specific questions on those local amendments. As we discussed last time, the effective date of both the 2025 statewide building standards code and the local amendments to those two subordinate codes would be January 1st of 2026. The recommendation here, so the, the first part would be to resume the public hearing, take those, that public testimony after you close the public hearing. And you're going to have to bear with me because this is the three ordinances that have very long titles. The three recommendations, which you're welcome to take individually or as one, first part would be to approve second reading and adopt an ordinance read by title with further reading waived titled An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, amending Title 10 of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code, Buildings and Construction, and adopting by reference the 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code, California Code of Regulations Title 24, consisting of the 2025 California Administrative Code, 2025 California Building Code, 2025 California Residential Code, 2025 California Electrical Code, 2025 California Mechanical Code, 2025 California Plumbing Code, 2025 California Energy Code, 2025 Wildland Urban Interface Code, 2025 California Historical Building Code, 2025 California Fire Code, 2025 California Existing Building Code, 2025 California Green Building Standard Code, Standards Code, and 2025 California Reference Standards Code, and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The second ordinance with a thankfully shorter title, our recommendation is to approve second reading and adopt an ordinance read by title with further reading waived titled An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, amending Title 10, Buildings and Construction, of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code to adopt certain amendments, additions, and deletions to the 2025 California Fire Code, California Code of Regulations Title 24, Part 9, and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And then finally, a third ordinance with a recommendation to approve read, second reading and adopt an ordinance read by title with further reading waived titled An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, amending Title 10, Buildings and Construction, of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code to adopt certain amendments, additions, and deletions to the 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code, California Code of Regulations Title 24, Part 7, and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. With that, I would suggest that you resume the public hearing and take that public testimony.
Thank you. Public hearing is now resumed. If anyone would like to speak to this issue. Seeing, oh, come on up.
I heard the word electricity.
There's an electrical code in the building.
Yeah, yeah. I'd just like to pay respect to those power lines you see everywhere. At the top of, for example, Punta Alta, look at those pylons and those thin wires. They carry all the energy, all the energy that powers everything that goes on residentially and commercially throughout the city, throughout the state. It's an immense amount of power on those thin lines. Just stop and think about it. That electricity travels the speed of light. And somebody has to organize the coordination of connections among the different power lines. The speed of light, it takes a fraction of a second to travel across the United States. So the job of coordinating the supply and demand at every utility station that you can see all around, there's a huge one on Baranca, there's a huge one. Look at those things and contemplate the complexity, the incredible engineering and the fabulous coordination and maintenance it takes to keep those grids running properly. It's amazing, truly. Worth looking at and fun to think about and appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good point.
Okay, any, anyone else? Public hearing is now closed or? Closed, okay, it's now closed. Any comments from counsel?
Do you need a motion for both?
I was going to make a comment and then you can go ahead. A lot of reading. Thank you, thank you so much, so much, Chris, for.
It adds some heft to the agenda packet.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for putting it all together. And this is a lot for us to consider and to, to look at. So the fact that the city manager put this together and we've had council discussions about it, it's time for us as a council to vote on it. So I, I move that we accept all three, accept all three of them so that I don't have to read them again?
No. Yes.
Just, just kidding about reading again, but thank you.
Great, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we come to a conditional use permit. Chris?
All right, you have two conditional use permits on the public hearing agenda today. The first relates to saddleback golf cars. For this particular project, Phil, would you raise your hand? Phil Belaffair, saddleback golf cars. Bob Bunyan, his consultant as well, are here if you have any questions for them. This project location, for those that aren't familiar, it's located generally at the southwest corner of the Molton Parkway via Campo Verde intersection. Property owner is Summit Properties. Philip Belaffair is the applicant. This particular conditional use permit would amend a previous conditional use permit that the city council approved some years ago, CUP 559. And it specifically relates to outdoor storage and alternative provisions to standard off-street parking regulations. As with any conditional use permit, the entitlements granted to the applicant would apply to the proposed and current use of the property, but also eligible successors at the property location. So by way of background, and this exhibit is in your agenda packet as well, I'll talk through it briefly today, but by way of background, the original conditional use permit for this use required a total of 45 off-street parking spaces. For a variety of reasons, saddleback golf cars does not require the use of 45 off-street parking stalls at its location. And so this approval, the primary purpose is to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 45 to 12. That's supported by a parking study that the applicant provided, the city subsequently reviewed. That parking study recommended 10 parking spaces, nine standard spaces and one accessible space. With subsequent discussions with the applicant, the proposal before you today includes a total of 12 off-street parking spaces, one of which is a van-accessible parking space and 11 of which are standard parking spaces. So the easiest way to think about this project is that it really just changes how the applicant is able to use the exterior space at the property. There is no expansion of square footage of the building. No part of this approval applies to the inside of the structure itself. So there's no physical change to the structures on the property. There's simply a physical change to how the, the outlying areas, the paved surfaces can be used. So to orient you to this picture, Via Campo Verde is at the top of the map exhibit. Molton Parkway is at the right side of the exhibit. So if this were stretched to the right, you would see basically like the coffee bean and tea leaf, the end of the Willow Tree Center to the right. And then to the left, you would see the 23 acre site on Golden Rain Foundation's property, the Garden Centers, and then further up the hill, the maintenance properties for Laguna Woods Village. So this is the existing building here, the big white block in the middle that says saddleback golf cars. The existing driveway is over here. You can see it hatched with some striping. The parking area that would remain a parking area is primarily here where my cursor is. These are the 11 standard parking spaces against the far western side of the parking lot. And then there would be a, an accessible parking space over here where my cursor is closer to the walkway to the building. So I don't know if you can see the cursor dancing around over there. But it's in the location where there are currently two standard parking spaces striped. The accessible parking spaces right now are on the far western side of the property. So they'd be consolidated down to the single space required by the building code and moved closer to the building itself. On the concrete walkways that are visible from the public right-of-way, so the two sides of the building that kind of wrap around on the Molton side and on the Via Campo Verde side, those areas, as they're being used right now, would continue to be able to be used for the outdoor storage of operable golf carts. And so this is the display of merchandise that saddleback golf cars sells in the course of their normal business operation. In addition to that, there are a couple of other golf cart storage areas. There's one in the place where, if you're familiar with the site, there's what used to be a loading dock area. That loading dock area would be permitted under this approval for the storage of golf carts, as would most of the backside of the parking lot that's obscured from public view. So around the backside of the building, there's, this is where the majority of those other 45 parking spaces are right now. Most of that, what you see shaded in green, would be able to be used for golf cart, golf car and equipment storage. A portion of that area, this red square towards the left here, would be.
Could you show it again?
Sorry, it's, it's over here. I'll just move my cursor faster.
So light red, got it.
Yeah, the light red area. That's a trailer parking area. So in the course of their regular business, they have trailers and then trucks with those trailers that move around to pick up and transport golf carts. This would be the parking area for those trailers and the carts. The existing trash enclosure is in the lower left of this image over here. That would continue to exist with this approval. We've included a condition of approval that would require saddleback golf cars to construct a roof over that trash enclosure, but it would otherwise remain in the same location. You see on this exhibit some darker red lines. You see them on either side of the entrance into the property and then you see them over here, kind of adjacent to the trash enclosure and then along the back driveway. Those are indications of striping and painted surfaces required by the fire authority to delineate fire lanes and fire curbs and also to provide sufficient space for fire engines to maneuver should they need to service the property. So the proposed project includes OCFA's requirements. They're incorporated as a part of the drawing package and that will involve both a combination of signage, curb painting, and then on asphalt painting and stenciling itself. The other area that's noted on here, you'll see two yellow square areas, kind of opposite the parking area. These are pickup and delivery areas. So they would be clear after hours, but during the business day, they would be able to accept deliveries temporarily staged materials and move them into and out of the building. Again, all of this has been reviewed by both our staff and then the Orange County Fire Authority staff. So we're comfortable with it from the fire and life safety aspect as well. There are a variety of conditions of approval proposed as part of this project. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I wanted to highlight three that have specific dates attached to them. If the city council approves the project today, this week, saddleback golf cars would be required to comply with the minimum clearances and fire lane requirements. By the end of February of 2026, they would be required to have put down the striping, painted the curbs, put up the signage, all of those things that OCFA is requiring. And then by the end of May, they would be required to have that roof installed over the trash enclosure. They would need to get whatever in the way of permits from the city in order to do that as well. A whole lot of other conditions of approval meant to really make clear to both parties what we're approving today, make it clear what each of those different colored squares can be used for. From staff's perspective, we're very comfortable with this recommendation today. We agree that the reduced parking field is appropriate for the property. Their parking study showed very clearly that they are, they don't have a need for 45 off-street parking spaces. And so from my perspective, this allows them to make better use of their existing property for purposes they actually have, right? Rather than having an empty parking field, this gives them the ability to store and stage equipment and materials subject to the conditions of approval that are included in the agenda packet. So with that, there is an opportunity for public testimony today. I'd recommend after my report that you open the public hearing, receive that public testimony, close the public hearing. And then our recommendation today is to approve a resolution titled A Resolution to the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Approving Conditional Use Permit, CUP-2023-0004, to amend conditional use permit, CUP-559, to allow for outdoor storage and alternative provisions to off-street parking regulations, resulting in a reduction in off-street parking stalls at the property located at 23252 Via Campo Verde, Laguna Woods, California, 92637, and determining that the conditional use permit is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301 of Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations. That'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public hearing is now open. Mr. Belaffair, would you like to say anything?
Hello, my name is Phil Belaffair. I'm the owner of Saddleback Golf Cars. We've been in that building for, I think it's 2009. The 45 parking spots originally were for when the Los Angeles Times was there and, which I operated out of because I was a Times dealer. And that's why it originally had 45 parking spots. We've been using it and then it come to our attention that we need to change it. So, because we have used, you know, we have golf carts everywhere, people drive up and we really don't have the pedestrian traffic from real cars. So I'd like to get it approved, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming today. And would anyone else like to comment? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
If you could put the map back up real quick, but on Via Campo Verde, I often walk to the Garden Center. There's no sidewalk on either side of Via Campo Verde. You have to walk in the street, the maintenance spokes are running up and down. I, I don't know if that could be addressed here.
I don't want this to sound like a cop-out, but Via Campo Verde is actually a private street, so it's not a city street. That street itself is part of the Golden Rain Foundation's property, so it would be best directed to them.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel? Anyone have any comment they'd like to make?
No, as I understand it, this, this permit is just bringing the property into compliance with what it actually needs to be doing. And instead of being set up for an LA Times office and trying to run a golf cart operation out of it. So I'll, I'll move, I'll move the resolution.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Thank you. Moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
I had a quick comment too, that, that isn't actually a, a good place to be walking because the Equestrian Center actually comes through there too. So that's another reason why they, you, you can see it if you've looked at that map, it crosses that. That's why you wouldn't want anything blocking that driveway because the horses actually do go along there to, to, to go. It's the only area to ride. do go along there to go, it's the only area to ride left since we've lost so much land. So anyway, thank you.
Moving on. Eight three is another conditional use permit. Chris?
All right. Item 8.3, so second conditional use permit. This one is related to the Temple Judea property. So this is at 24512 Molton Parkway. Both the property owner and the applicant in this case is Temple Judea of Laguna Hills. This particular conditional use permit would amend a previous county approval. So the county referred to conditional use permits as conditional permits. This one, CUP-1531, and other applicable prior approvals would be modified as part of this item. This simply relates to the establishment of what we're referring to as a small group learning and tutoring services use inside the Temple Judea building. So the Temple Judea property itself, like the Settle Back Golf Cars item, there are no physical changes proposed. The building isn't getting larger, the parking structure isn't changing. This particular project is simply about establishing a new use within an existing building. So in this case, Temple Judea has leased property to a business, in this case called Creative Steam. Creative Steam provides educational and enrichment services for homeschooled students and others. We have characterized the use as a small group learning and tutoring services use. We've defined that in the proposed conditions of approval because it isn't one of the uses specifically contemplated by the zoning code. This CUP, like the last one, would apply to both the proposed and current use of the property and then eligible successors at the project location. So with this particular item, there are proposed conditions of approval. We've included those in the agenda packet. And I'm sorry, it's for item 8.3 of today's agenda packet. Couple of highlights. We have incorporated the structure of the business as was presented to us. So it operates exclusively indoors within existing buildings. It operates on four weekdays during the week. It operates Mondays, Tuesdays, is closed Wednesday, and is open Thursday and Friday. It only operates between the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., so it really is kind of off-peak time for the property. It's limited to a total of 50 clients at any given time, all of whom are 18 years of age or younger. My understanding is it caters to a younger group of students, but they do have the ability to go older as well. And they must comply with the maximum occupancies of the rooms and the building on the property. Importantly, this, this conditional use permit does not approve a school, and it does not approve a daycare. Those are distinct uses and not what's contemplated in this approval and not what the applicant is requesting. This is a supplemental-type educational institution. It's not a school, it's not a daycare, it's not licensed by the State Department of Social Services. This is its own kind of niche educational use. So having said that, we have no concerns with this project as conditioned. After the public hearing today, we would recommend the city council approve a resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California: Approving Conditional Use Permit CUP-2025-0002 to amend conditional permit CP-1531 and any applicable prior approvals to allow for the establishment of a small group learning and tutoring services use at the property located at 24512 Molton Parkway, Laguna Woods, California 92637, and determining that the conditional use permit is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations." With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for the public hearing.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to comment on this. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel, any comments?
Yeah, I just had one comment, and I just want to, you know, express my appreciation to our city manager for looking into these kinds of permits and making sure that the council has all the information that we need so that we can make, can approve these conditional use permits. So it's good for us to have the information and for the public to have this information as well. So, thank you. And I, I move to approve the...
Thank you.
...permit.
I think this looks like a decent program, a good compatible use with the temple property, and not intrusive on surrounding uses in any way. And I certainly approve of it. I'll second the motion.
Did you have something to say?
No.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so we get to city business, and before we do, I want to say that I serve as the city's designated representative on the Orange County Fire Authority's Board of Directors. This item involves a lease for a new fire station that must be approved by both this city council and the Orange County Fire Authority. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself. Although I have no financial interest in this lease, I do not want to be in a position where I'm responsible for voting on an agreement on behalf of both parties to the agreement. I plan to recuse myself if this lease comes before the Orange County Fire Authority's Board of Directors as well. So, Annie, mayor pro tem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you very much. I'll note that Mayor Horn has left the room as, in accordance with state law. I wanted to start by talking about the why. And Chief Summers, if you want to add anything, feel free at any point during the presentation. But as we've been talking about this project over the last couple of years, one of the things I want to make abundantly clear is that the why is that Station 22 is a very impacted station. It is the most active of the Orange County Fire Authority's 78 fire stations by far. The numbers that you're looking at on the screen come from the Orange County Fire Authority's Standards of Coverage document, most current standards of coverage document, and it shows five years' worth of both service demand and simultaneous incidents at the fire station. You will see that over the course of five years, Station 22 handled almost 45,000 calls for service. The next most active station over that same period of time handled 22,000 calls for service. Big difference between 45,000 and 22,000. Simultaneous incidents, these are, as the name suggests, issues where one call for service comes into the station and then a second call for service comes into the station for them to handle at the same time. Over the last five years, the 2019 to 2023 period, Station 22 handled over 18,000 simultaneous incidents. The next most active station handled under 5,000. So Station 22 is more than pulling its weight in the system, but is in need of relief. So that's a big part of the why. The other part has to do with five-minute travel times. So I'm going to show you a couple of exhibits. This one right here was prepared by the Fire Authority. The red dot that is towards the right side of the screen is the existing Fire Station 22. That's the station on Paseo de Valencia. What's highlighted in green is where the engines from that station can regularly get to within a five-minute travel time. The black line that you see, and I'll, I'll put my cursor on it because it is a little bit faint, the black line that you see is the boundary line for the city of Laguna Woods. So where my cursor is right now is where the towers is. You can kind of see the oblong shape there. And then this is the entire western side of the city. So this is the Gate 9 area, the 110s, Gates 10 and 11 over here. That all falls currently outside that five-minute travel time from Station 22. So in looking at how to address that, obviously, we came to the conclusion some time ago that an additional fire station was necessary. What got more complicated is where that fire station goes. And both Mike and I could sit here and go on and on and on about the last several decades of efforts on this project. But long story short, the determination was made that really the only viable location is the lower portion of the City Center Park property. And so what you're looking at right now is an aerial image of the City Center Park property. That's what you see is the kind of squiggly serpentine line in the middle of the picture. To the left here, this dirt lot, that is the undeveloped area next to Clubhouse 7. So again, if this image were stretched to the left, you would see Clubhouse 7 and the employee parking lot behind the community center. And then to the right here, you see some of the self-storage property that's accessible from Molton Parkway, and then an access road that becomes important in this discussion up to the El Toro Water District's reservoir at the top of Molton Parkway and El Toro Road. And then, of course, Molton Parkway is up here towards the, the top right of the image. The hatched area here, which this maroon arrow is pointing towards, the hatched area is the portion of the property that we're going to be talking about today, potentially leasing to the Orange County Fire Authority to construct an additional fire station. There is a portion of City Center Park outside that hatched area, over here where my cursor is right now. That flatter portion that sits just behind the Ayers Hotel parking lot, that would remain a public park and not be a part of the proposed ground lease to the Fire Authority. So in looking at this park, one of the things that then happened is, okay, what does that do to five-minute travel times? So this is the image we were looking at previously. Again, shows the western side not within that five-minute travel zone. I want you to look at that left side as I advance to the next slide. This is what happens with the addition of that second fire station. So the western side of Laguna Woods is pulled within that five-minute travel time, this time served by a new station at City Center Park, which we're referring to as Fire Station 12. That fire station would operate in addition to Fire Station 22. So this is not meant to replace Station 22, it is meant to supplement it and augment those services. In some conversations, people may have heard me talk about it as a bumper station of sorts. It's not a station that's envisioned as, as large or with as many amenities as Station 22, but it does position resources closer to the area where those resources are needed. So that is the why. A couple of milestones, and the agenda report goes through this in much greater detail, but I wanted to talk about some of the more notable things that have happened since the city council conceptually approved using a portion of City Center Park for a new fire station. So that happened in September of 2022. We made a presentation to the city council. We talked about how this was really the best possible site currently available for a new fire station. Subsequent to that, the first thing that we had to do was actually get state legislation allowing us to use that portion of City Center Park for a fire station. Long story short, the city used some monies from a Proposition 40 bond to make improvements to the park property. With that expenditure of bond money came some restrictions on the property, restrictions that, if not modified by the state legislature, would remain in effect through June 30th of 2031. The decision was that in the interest of time and because the station is necessary now, we needed to pursue a change or a legislative action that would allow that lease to take place. So we went through that process in September of 2023. The governor signed Senate Bill 475, which allows the city to lease the property to the Orange County Fire Authority, subject to a variety of conditions in that Senate bill. From there, there were a couple of other hoops to jump through. We are very appreciative of having been able to work successfully with the Golden Rain Foundation to resolve a sewer easement issue that complicated the potential future development of a fire station. That was resolved in August of 2024. In September of 2024, the city council approved a conceptual plan for certain capital improvements to the City Center Park property. That is a requirement of SB 475. So the state legislation requires the city to make a certain minimum capital investment in City Center Park and the portion that would remain in exchange for taking a portion of it out of service. Before the city council could approve that conceptual plan, we had to do two community meetings. We got community feedback during those meetings, specifically focused on achieving the intent of SB 475, which was to enhance the recreational utility of the remaining City Center Park property. We took that public feedback, funneled it into a conceptual plan for the park improvements. City council approved that in September, and we submitted it to the state in October. In December of 2024, and again with great appreciation to the El Toro Water District, we accepted an easement for use of their existing access road in connection with this fire station project. That easement contemplates that the access road will be used jointly for access to the Water District's reservoir, but also for access to the fire station itself. And it further contemplates that there will be an agreement between the city and the Water District entered into by the end of next year that more specifically delineates how that will work and what improvements will be necessary to the Water District's access road in order to make it possible. So that easement was accepted in December of 2024. In August of this year, we made some presentations to the Golden Rain Foundation and Third Mutual in deference to their adjacency to the project location. We also made attempts to meet with the Ayers Hotel, since they sit right behind the park property. Ultimately, we're not able to schedule a meeting with the Ayers Hotels management, but we remain willing to do so moving forward. So that's some of what's been happening over the last couple of years. Not everything, but I just wanted to give you some highlights. Today, there's really two parts to this discussion. One is the proposed lease agreement, the other is the California Surplus Land Act. So I want to talk about the California Surplus Land Act and how that interacts with this whole exercise first, and then we'll move on to talking about the proposed lease agreement. So the California Surplus Land Act more or less requires that before a local agency can sell or lease property, it has to first either declare the property as surplus land or alternatively declare it as exempt surplus land. If the city or other local agency declares it as surplus land, they're required to first offer that land to certain other public agencies and to housing proponents for potential housing construction. If the property is declared exempt surplus land, it means that it's subject to one or more exemptions in the California Surplus Land Act, and disposition, whether that's sale or lease, can occur more readily than if it was surplus land. In other words, exempt surplus land doesn't have to be offered to housing proponents for future housing development. In this case, the proposed ground lease qualifies as exempt public land for two different reasons. One is based on size. There's an exemption in the Surplus Land Act that says if the land is less than half an acre, and it's not contiguous to land that's owned by a state agency or a local agency, that that agency uses for either open space purposes or low or moderate income housing purposes, then it's exempt. In this case, there is adjacent land owned by another local agency, that's the El Toro Water District, but they don't use that land for open space or lower moderate income housing. So that coupled with the size of the lease area being less than a half acre makes it exempt under that, that first provision there. The second thing is that this proposed ground lease agreement transfers the land from one public agency, the city of Laguna Woods, to another public agency, the Orange County Fire Authority. So that's a separate exemption in there. So from staff's perspective, we're exempt for both of those reasons. As part of today's recommendation, we are recommending that the city council adopt a resolution declaring the land to be exempt surplus land, making certain findings that are required by law. What has to happen then is if you adopt that resolution, we will submit it to the state. The Department of Housing and Community Development then gets a 30-day period of time to review your resolution and your findings, and either agree that the lease would not violate the Surplus Land Act, disagree, claim that it would violate the Surplus Land Act, or take no action at all, in which case we can move forward. So that 30-day period of time would start presumably tomorrow, assuming that we submit it later tonight. After that 30-day period has elapsed, or if the state has weighed in prior to the 30 days, the city council then can act on the proposed ground lease. At today's meeting, you're not legally able to approve the ground lease agreement. We're going to go through it and talk about it, but we need to hold it in abeyance for either you to vote for or against until after we get some sort of communication from the state, or after that 30-day period elapses and they don't communicate with us at all.
No action is an action?
No action is an action, yes. So we are anticipating that, based on our previous dealings with each... So we are anticipating that based on our previous dealings with HCD, that they will likely take the entire 30-day period. If that's the case, that 30-day period will fall just after your next meeting in December. So our plan is to include consideration of the lease agreement on your December agenda. If the state hasn't weighed in by that meeting, we would continue that to a meeting the following week. So in a best-case scenario, you're able to act on it in December on the 17th. Worst-case scenario, you act on it the following week, maybe the 22nd or so. That, again, all falls on HCD in terms of timing. So that's the Surplus Land Act issue. Before I move on to the proposed lease agreement, do you have any questions on the Surplus Land Act piece of this? Does that make sense? Okay. So moving on to the proposed lease agreement, in your agenda packet, I put a series of bullet points on there, which I'm going to put on the screen just for anybody who hasn't seen them, but kind of in a term sheet format, identifying some of the key points of the proposed ground lease. You also have a copy of that proposed agreement in your agenda packet. I don't mean to go through every single piece of it, but I am going to go through quite a bit of it in recognition of the importance of what we're talking about. The city owns very finite public land. The lease agreement we're talking about would lock up a portion of that property for at least the next 99 years, as presently contemplated under the lease agreement. I will add to that that the Orange County Fire Authority's Executive Committee, they're scheduled to consider the ground lease agreement at their meeting tomorrow. At that meeting, they are able to approve the agreement because they're not the one disposing of the property. So if they approve the ground lease agreement tomorrow, it would really just be waiting on the city council to act on it once HCD weighs in. The ground lease itself, like I said, it's a 99-year term. It would start December 23rd of this year, and it would run through December 22nd of 2124, which sounds so far out there. But anyway, it's a 99-year term. There is no rent as a part of this. We recognize that this is doing public good for the community. The Orange County Fire Authority, to their purposes, they do not typically pay rent for fire stations. There is some consideration of a financial component in this agreement. There is a one-time payment for certain pre-development costs to the city in the amount of $200,000. We would anticipate that that payment would probably not come in until next fiscal year at the earliest. It's tied to one of the permit approvals that we'll talk about in a moment. And then the Orange County Fire Authority would also reimburse the city for its actual costs, up to $750,000 for the improvements to City Center Park. We are almost complete with those construction drawings for what we're referring to as the City Center Park enhancement project. We are anticipating being able to solicit bids for that project in January. And then, construction shouldn't take too terribly long, it's not a large project, it's not particularly complicated, but that up to $750,000, we believe, will cover our costs for that project, and in doing so will satisfy a requirement in SB 475 for us to make at least $212,000 of improvements to the property, but improvements that enhance the recreational In terms of noise control, we are aware that the fire station property would sit behind the Ayers Hotel, and it would sit in relative proximity to some of Third Mutual's property up behind Clubhouse 7. Fire stations all across Orange County and all across the country coexist amicably with neighbors. Station 22 is surrounded by residents on two sides and a commercial property on the other. Nevertheless, we included some prohibitions in here to try to reduce noise associated with the stations. The vehicle apparatus that are positioned at that station will not be able to do testing or any other non-emergency use of their sirens at that property. We also will not allow any non-emergency outdoor use of stereos, PA systems, or other types of amplified sound. There are a couple of other conditions in the lease agreement, including that this particular station, for a variety of reasons, won't host public events. It won't have the parking to do so in the first place, but that would also bring with it some additional noise. So we did work through some reasonable noise control prohibitions that would reduce that When we talked about this back in 2022, there was some conversation about maintaining connectivity between the Remnant Park property and the public right-of-way. So as part of this project, we did work through whether it would be possible to construct and maintain a sidewalk connecting Molton Parkway to the Remnant Park property. The short answer that there is, the lease agreement requires OCFA to construct an at least five-foot-wide sidewalk. Once they construct that, that would be turned over to the city to own and maintain. We did look at whether it would be possible to build a wider sidewalk to create a multimodal trail from Molton Parkway to the park property to allow for golf cart traffic. There isn't sufficient width in the property to reasonably accommodate the fire station and a 10- or 11-foot-wide sidewalk, but there is room to accommodate a simple pedestrian sidewalk. So we've included that in the lease agreement. One of the big benefits for the city from my perspective in this project is the facilities that will be created inside the fire station for use by the city's law enforcement and animal services providers, so by use of the Sheriff's Department and the city of Laguna Beach's police department. As contemplated in the lease agreement, we would get locker space for at least eight people, a kitchenette, a single occupancy accessible restroom, a janitorial closet with a floor service sink, office space, storage space, all of the utilities and services that come along with those spaces, and two dedicated parking stalls. This will be a significant plus for both of those agencies. The Sheriff's Department does not currently have report-writing office space or break space within the city for deputies that work here. Likewise, the city of Laguna Beach doesn't have facilities on this side of the canyon, and so their animal services officers travel back and forth through Laguna Canyon quite a bit during the day. So this would provide them with break space, office space, report-writing space on this side of the canyon, and specifically in Laguna Woods for the Sheriff's Department.
Where would they park the cars?
So there will be two dedicated parking stalls at the fire station for the Sheriff's Department and animal services staff.
Spaces that would be utilized by the fire?
Correct. So these are in addition to the fire station spaces. There would be two spaces that'll be separately signed for Sheriff's Department and animal services use. The idea is not that vehicles would be left there or stored there. This would just be if somebody's there, they're taking a break, there will be a dedicated parking space available for them. So this, to me, is a really big benefit for us. We don't have space in City Hall to accommodate this, but there's an obvious benefit to creating an environment where law enforcement and animal services personnel are able to remain within the boundaries of Laguna Woods as much as possible. So these facilities would be built at OCFA's expense and incorporated into the fire station property, but for separate use. In addition to that, we would have the ability, under the lease agreement, to install and maintain pole-mounted surveillance cameras on the lease premises, specifically to surveil the sidewalk, the park property, and public right-of-way as well. This was just, I don't necessarily know that we're going to do it, at least not immediately, but we wanted to keep that door open as we look towards a future where video surveillance plays a pretty important role in public safety. With respect to landscaping, one of the other things that happens here is, once we make the improvements to City Center Park, six months after that, 180 days, OCFA will take over certain park maintenance activities. Those park maintenance activities relate to mulch within the landscaped areas, and then the maintenance of the decomposed granite surfaces. Decomposed granite is what the walking surfaces in the park will be made of. So OCFA has certain tasks that are delineated in the last exhibit in the proposed ground lease agreement, that they'll be responsible for a couple of times a year to help with some of that park maintenance cost. In addition, if they don't separate utilities from the park property, they will end up paying for the utilities for the entirety of the property, including the park property. We did include specific language requiring OCFA to comply with the easement that the city entered into with the Water District for use of the access road. We actually went a step further and included the easement itself as an exhibit to the proposed ground lease, to make it clear to all parties that that is a controlling document in this lease agreement.
Excuse me, can you go back to the other slide? The landscaping, it says, perform certain ongoing park maintenance activities. Can you give an example of one of those?
Yeah, so it's primarily recompacting and filling the decomposed granite walking surfaces. Over time, that surface, for lack of a better word, blows away. So they'll be keeping it, they'll be keeping it flat and compacted, and the mulch has to be replaced or added to regularly. So a couple of times a year, they'll be freshening up the mulch, they'll be recompacting and filling the decomposed granite surfaces, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. So in terms of insurance and indemnification, the lease agreement requires OCFA to provide insurance and indemnification to the city's satisfaction, so we've included language in there that the city attorney's office has reviewed and JPIA has reviewed. That is the insurance that OCFA has agreed to provide, so we don't have any concerns at all on insurance and indemnification.
Say, how does that work? You mean, they provide, we pay for it, knowing what is to be allowed, and then they...
No, no, they, so their insurance, they'll have insurance, yes, that'll extend to us. Termination, so in most respects, this is a 99-year lease agreement. The city will not have the ability to terminate that agreement with two, well, three exceptions, I suppose. One is obviously if OCFA is in breach or default of the agreement, there would be an ability to pursue termination. But the two more specific opportunities for termination, one is if OCFA hasn't obtained the site development permit that is required by the ground lease agreement by June 30th of 2027. We're going to talk about permit requirements, but the site development permit is basically the city council's approval of the facilities, the site planning, the orientation of the property itself. So it's the large planning approval for the project. They would need to obtain that approval by June 30th of 2027, and then they would need to actually begin operation of a fire station no later than December 31st of 2029. Our hope, obviously, both our hope and OCFA's hope, is that it will happen sooner than that, but these are two opportunities that if for some reason OCFA has not moved through the process, the city has the ability to terminate, but not the obligation to terminate. So that would be a discussion we would have to have closer to that. But again, all signs point to there's a shared commitment to getting this station open sooner than that. These are just some backstop dates for our own purposes. And then in terms of ownership of improvements, some of the improvements on the property become our property immediately, like the sidewalk. Others, like the fire station, changes that they make to the grounds themselves, those are OCFA's property until the lease is terminated or the lease expires, at which point they become the city's property. Again, the reasonable expectation here, you don't typically see fire stations close, right? So we're talking about a 99-year lease, but I think, were I an elected official contemplating this lease agreement, I would be looking at it as, yes, there's an initial 99-year term, but the likelihood is that it would be extended beyond that. Nevertheless, we've included provisions for if something happens different. So the lease agreement also includes a number of other permits and approvals that OCFA will be required to obtain. First among them is obviously building permits, right? So building permits, grading permits, encroachment permits, sign permits, all of the things that anyone else building any other type of building needs to obtain, they will have to obtain. Likewise, any permits that the El Toro Water District or other government agencies require, they will have to obtain. In addition to that, and more specific to this project, there are some staff approvals, and then there are some approvals that'll be coming before the city council. We have an existing irrigation controller on the property that controls all of the irrigation for the park property currently. Our assumption is that OCFA will need to move that as part of the construction of a fire station. We need to be involved in that decision because it feeds our portion of the property as well. So there's an approval required there. The sidewalk design, this is for the sidewalk connecting Molton Parkway up to the park property. That will require design approval of the city engineer and an encroachment permit for the construction associated with it. With respect to our facilities within the station, that office space, storage space, et cetera, that will require a staff approval for the location of those rooms and amenities, the design of those amenities, the finished selections for them, all of that will require city approval. City manager and city engineer's approval will be required for modifications related to circulation. So we've talked previously that for this station to be possible, the Fire Authority will need to make some modifications to the sidewalk facing Molton Parkway. They'll also need to make some modifications to the median to allow them to make a left-hand turn out of the station. And with that, there will be some necessary modifications and possibly additions of traffic control devices and timing associated with it. So the city obviously has a vested interest in all of that public circulation piece. Our approval will be required for all components of that. The big approval that'll come before the city council is the approval of the site development permit for the property. Again, this is the design of all the buildings, the structures, the facilities, the orientation of the parking lot, the height, the massing, all of that. Site development permits are ordinarily approved by staff. Given the high profile and public interest in this project, staff will be deferring to the city council, so that permit will come before the council as a whole. And then concurrent with that site development permit, there'll be a requirement for a landscape approval. We're requiring this project to comply with the water efficiency standards in our municipal code, even though it is likely that letter of the code they wouldn't need to because of the small area of landscaping that will be present on the site, but we have required in this document that they comply with the landscape standards and prepare all of those submittals for our purposes as well.
Aren't they having the availability of recycled water?
I don't believe we currently have recycled water at City Center Park. They could potentially have that, but...
If they have recycled water, I don't think there should be any curtailment of their landscaping, because the more moist the landscaping is, the safer we all are.
Well, and the landscape documentation package and those requirements have certain concessions for if recycled water is available on the site. It's not treated the same as potable water, but I don't know that recycled water is expressly contemplated for this site, but it's obviously not something that's prohibited in any sense. So there's a lot of other permits that will be required. The lease agreement is kind of the first domino in that row that gives them the rights to the property and the ability to pursue all of these other permits that are required. One other thing I wanted to point out is that if the city council approves the lease agreement, by the end of this calendar year, so probably the last week or so of December, a temporary construction fence will go up around the lease area. In full disclosure, nothing is going to be happening within that temporary construction fence for quite some time. But SB 475, that legislation that allows us to lease the property, requires that we remove the leased area from use as a park no later than January 1st, 2026. So I don't quite, like, I'm not going to sit here and pretend to tell you that I understand why we need to close the park earlier than when we actually have to close it for construction, but that's what the legislation says. We need to comply with the legislation that allows us to do this in the first place. So that fence would go up. That would be the indication that OCFA has assumed responsibility for the property. It's now, it's subject to the lease, but it'll just, it'll be there for a while, so, in full disclosure. There's an opportunity for public comments on this today, and then our, the only part of the recommendation that we're actually looking for a vote on is this piece, the Adopt a Resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Declaring the Portion of the Real Property Commonly Known as City Center Park Located at 24121 Molton Parkway, Laguna Woods, California 92637, Orange County Assessor's Parcel Number 616-012-18." That would be leased to the Orange County Fire Authority. That would be leased to the Orange County Fire Authority for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a new fire station and for public safety purposes, to be exempt public land as that phrase is defined in the California Surplus Land Act. That's the piece of the recommendation that we're looking for a motion and a vote on. The second piece just talks about discussing and providing feedback to staff on the proposed ground lease agreement. The ground lease that I just went over, it's been negotiated between city staff and OCFA staff. We're both supportive of it. And like I said, they're going through the same exercise with their board or with their executive committee shortly. But to the extent you have any feedback for us, we're happy to take that as well. But otherwise, the lease agreement itself would come back at some point in December for more formal consideration. So with that, I would recommend that the mayor pro tem invite public comments, and then we'll take a discussion.
We're open for public comment?
I haven't been in that area for a while, so my memory may be quite incorrect about it. So is it fair to ask for clarification of some of those areas around that?
Sure.
Okay, so I have a Google Maps here, and it shows the Ayers Hotel on one side, Laguna Wood Village offices on the other side.
Yes.
Okay, now, I don't remember where that serpentine is.
It's behind the Ayers Hotel.
Yeah, but there's a lot of behinds.
You want to bring me your iPad and all?
Okay. So I've stood at the top of that serpentine, I may have walked it.
Yeah.
But as I recall, there is a rather steeply graded green area. Is that what you're referring to as the park?
Yes. It is, it is not a park in the sense of...
Who uses that park? It's so steep, if I remember right, that it's a good place to throw a ball down from, but not back up to.
Yes, the park predates me, I...
I'm not blaming you, I'm just trying to get my...
No, no, I, I'll give you a bit of trivia. Some people have heard this, so bear with me. But back in the day before there was an Ayers Hotel, the plan was to construct a Smith's Grocery Store there. The park property, what you see as the park property today, would have been an access road for trucks making deliveries to the grocery store from Molton Parkway, making a straight shot up to the shopping center. At some point, the grocery store plan was abandoned, and a hotel was built in its place. The property owner then had this weird piece of land going down the hill. They didn't have any use for it. They succeeded in offloading that property to the city. The city got the property, it was undeveloped for several years. And then at some point, they were successful in obtaining Prop 40 park bond monies to make some improvements to the property. Those improvements are what causes the state to get involved in this whole discussion because we're still within the performance period for that grant. But yes, it's a very narrow, relatively steep park property. In order to construct a fire station on the property, there's going to be a fair amount of earthwork to drop it down to a stable grade.
I just tried to get it straight.
But yes, that's where you're talking.
Yeah, so therefore you can call it a quote-unquote "park." But, okay, so now I get it, but now there's another piece of land...
Mr. Ralph, before you go on.
Yes, please.
You refer to it as a steep, grassy area, and I think you may be looking at the wrong place. If you look at the picture on the, on the screen, the serpentine walkway there is what it looks like now. And I walk that fairly regularly when I'm going from City Hall to Gate 7, rather than coming straight up El Toro Road. I just go down Molton Little Ways and come up that way and come up the golf cart path to Gate 7. And it's with the foliage that's in there and the shrubs and the grasses and boulders, it's really a lovely walk, I'll miss it.
Yeah, yeah, I believe it's quite lovely, but I'm still trying to get the picture. I mean, here's the serpentine, you're going to put a fire station in there.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
And so, Danish Park, where is the park?
Right, where...
Yeah, so this portion of the park right here where my cursor is, that's on the other side of this black line, this would remain a park. So if you're familiar with that property at all, at the very top of it, there isn't really much in the way of plantings, it's just a flat paved area in like two or three tiers. That area would remain a park. But where it starts going downhill and you start getting that serpentine path, that's all within the fire station area.
Okay.
I think the remaining, I think the remaining part is about the size of this room.
It's point, I believe it's like point two something acres, it's very, very small.
Okay, so my next and final point of clarification. Again, I'm looking at Google Map, Ayers Hotel over here, Laguna Woods here, and Molton Parkway down that way. Okay, if you go into that parking area between the Laguna Woods Village offices and the Ayers Hotel, and you walk to the back of it, there used to be, as I recall, just kind of a crumply stretch of property there. What is that? Is that, is that still crumply?
It's Golden Rain Foundation property, it's undeveloped, so it's just, it's space that's available for some sort of future use, but there's no current use of the property. A small portion of it is used for employee parking, but that's it.
Commercial development?
No, it's zoned for open space.
Oh, and it shall remain there. Thank you, thanks very much for the time.
Of course.
I'm not quite up to speed, but how much do we pay per year roughly for the OCFA services?
We don't, we don't pay anything directly. So we are a structural fire fund city. When residents and property owners here pay their property tax, a portion of that goes to the county, who then remits it to the fire authority. So the money doesn't actually pass through the city, I wouldn't be able to tell you that.
Well, that's how I couldn't find it. So I know Irvine often considers leaving the Orange County Fire Authority because they don't feel they're receiving their proportion of services compared to the Irvine property tax input. And Mayor Hatch once said perhaps Laguna Woods was thinking of leaving the Orange County Fire Authority. I thought I heard that. What if that happens? It seems unlikely. And is this a fair rental, the leasing agreement, is this fair? Is there any comparable thing? Because OCFA gets a lot of money coming in. Can't they pay more to Laguna Woods?
Sure.
First off, since, since having a fire station there provides such a direct and tangible and life-saving benefit to our residents, it's a little hard for us to say, well, you can't have this space unless you pay us a pile of money. And then, as our city manager pointed out, there is a lot of consideration in lieu of rent, non-monetary consideration. They are building this office space for us, and we will occupy it without paying rent to the fire department that owns the building. They are going, they are undoubtedly, we expect they'll probably pay the utilities for that space. They will provide the water probably for the remaining part of the park. They are giving us a couple of lump sums for park development and for our pre-development costs, which amortized out over a period of time could equal the rent. And they're providing some landscape services to us for the park. So we're getting intangible and tangible and practical benefits, although we're not getting any cash.
I see it as taking it from one pocket and putting it into the other. Actually, I think the benefit to Third Mutual is considerable because you will have a fire station closer. And insurance companies in this world we live in today, because of humans, want to make sure you have access to fire protection. And I, so I have a feeling, not a feeling, I very strongly believe that that, the location of that, even though it doesn't seem all that much closer, it is. And the other issue is that the response time will be short and for people who have medical issues, and that's a very important aspect to all of this. So frankly, whether we pay for it, when the, when the fire department pays for the park, to me, it's taking it from one pocket and putting it into the other because we all pay for the fire department, we all, and they're going to be paying for the park, so it's kind of hard to figure it out.
I think it's also important to remember that with the new station, I mean, yes, you have the one-time construction cost and all of that, but OCFA will be operating the station, which is additional bodies and equipment and all of that, presumably in perpetuity. So it's not, I don't look at it as a, it's not like it's a gift to them. I mean, if anything, it comes with a pretty significant ongoing operating cost for the station as well. But I also agree with the other points that were made.
You need a motion at this point?
We're still in the public hearing, or, I'm sorry, public comments.
Any other public comments? Okay, public comments are closed.
I think I'm ready to make a motion if we so need.
Yes, you'll, if you want to make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution.
Resolution, uh huh.
I just want to... Motion. A couple of things that you pointed out that were really, I don't know what I was thinking or was not thinking, the fact that the sheriff department, whom we pay for services, really don't have a space where they can park their vehicle and do their reports. So they, they do their work here and they have to go off-site someplace to write their reports. And same for, for the animal control people. So these are things that weren't in the back of my mind, these organizations that provide service for us. And we, eventually, we will have an opportunity for them to have space. The other thing that I thought, we, this process began in 2022.
This iteration of this process. This, I've been here for, I don't know, almost 20 years. Mike remembers this from back when he was assigned to Station 22. I mean, this is decades and decades of talking in circles around it, it's, something's finally happening, so.
And, and that was my other comment, finally, something is happening. And it's still a long ways off, but at least the wheels are really turning now. And we can see almost a potential ending to actually having the fire station. And I can actually attest to the fact that have, it seems like when we say the response time is within a certain amount of time, and they do respond very rapidly. But I've been involved in a couple of emergencies where I know how quickly the rescue people get there. But I tell you, it seems like two minutes can be forever. And so it really just brings me comfort in thinking that eventually we would get to a point where when we call them, it won't seem like three minutes is forever. If I see, but at least they'll be closer. So anyway, so we can entertain a motion to, oh, did you have...
I did move early, or were you gonna speak?
Did you move it? Okay, well, I'll second it. But I just wanted to, to thank our staff because you can see how painstaking this has been. We had to shepherd a special bill through the legislature. I think Chris went up to Sacramento once or twice to go to committee meetings to get it done so we could get rid of the restrictions of the state bond, park bond funding and say, we took your money for a park, but now we want to use it for something else. And those were tedious negotiations. And then getting clear title by getting GRF to abandon its easement for the sewer. And all of the things that have gone into this and the careful design of the lease, I'm just really impressed and really appreciative, and I thank staff, and I'm ready to vote.
It's my understanding that the, the Smith Park, the Smith contributed the land. It had to be a park, I thought they didn't give it, it couldn't have been developed or something, that's what I recall.
No, it was, it didn't come with a restriction on the property itself, they just wanted to kind of get out of it. But I think when the city accepted it, the council's intent at the time was always, it's going to be a park, we're not looking to develop it for any purpose. Then it sat vacant for a period of time until that Prop 40 money really lit a fire and incentivized the initial expenditure in it. But yeah, the restriction comes from the park bond money, not the lease itself, or not the deed itself.
Once you commit to a park, you, they don't want you to say you're going to have a park and then use the land and do something else. So I get the background of that, even though it makes it very difficult.
Okay, so we, it's been moved, do we get a second?
We got a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and so the mayor's going to be coming back into the room in a second, if we would just want to give her a minute. She, I think she should be, yeah. Yeah, she was able to watch it on a laptop, so. All right.
Okay.
Good job. Okay, we get to the last item on the agenda, objective design and development regulations.
I have a presentation, did you want to make any opening comments?
Yeah, I will. I, I've lived in this community for 20 years. And over the years, when I was president of Third Mutual, we had an issue having to do with the, the community that would affect our, our homes. And that, they were going to add Ashley Furniture. And the way it was designed, Ashley Furniture is, usually has a very tall building, and it's right next to a freeway. So you can see it for quite a distance when you're driving. And when we saw what their proposed plan was, that would not be a pleasant thing for people who lived in Third Mutual, particularly at Gate 56. So I did go to their city council as a, the president of Third Mutual and asked them to not adopt a plan that would have such a tall building that could affect the property nearby. And they were very receptive. And even though the building's tall, believe me, it would have been substantially taller. Then probably within the last year or two, I don't recall, I think it's in this last year, there was another plan for our neighboring city. And in this case, they were proposing, one of the council members had proposed a very large sign. It was going to be a digital sign right on the freeway. And once again, it was going to be a huge sign. And I did not have, we didn't have a meeting, so I went as a private residence and protested that. I actually contacted people who belong to the, oh, that's the, what church is that? The Episcopal Church. And because it would have affected their building specifically. So here you would have had this huge blinking digital sign high up and once again affecting the people at Gate 56. So once again, the people on that city council were very receptive. And I don't know what their feelings were on it, but that, with the church and, and the people showing up, the thing didn't proceed on. And we've had things like this happen in the community. When you, the, when this community was constructed, the developer, Ross Cortez, he had a vision. He had a vision for a retirement community that would be affordable, that was the whole thing. And that's unfortunately changing, it appears. But it was affordable, and so people who lived here could retire into an affordable community, and it would be a lovely community, not something that, and this was going to be a showcase. And he had designs, he had landscape architects involved from the very start. He had, he had road signs that were very charming, those have long since gone. But there is a view to our community. And it, it started, my concern started, I think, with the Ashley Furniture thing. Then I saw the situation with the proposed digital sign. And then I saw one, something that's happened right here in our community. And that is, the, the community has a look about it, it has a harmony. Now, over time, any community changes, it doesn't stay the same way forever. But if you begin to make drastic commercial changes to your property, you begin to affect the value of your property and even what you have. And I've told this story a number of times, but it's a true story. I was driving in Los Angeles, and all of a sudden, I happened to notice something. And I looked as far as I could see to the north, to the east, to the west, and to the south, I saw not one tree. I could not, what in the world? I thought, my goodness, what could have happened to this, what, what occurred? And then when I looked, I began to look, and I noticed that the houses had taken out their lawns and their shrubs, and they were parking their vehicles. They had paved their, all their property, there was no, there was no soil, not one shrub. And I looked and I thought, gosh, you would think the first person that did it, everybody would go crazy and say, hey, look what Sam did. You know, we've got to stop this, but they didn't, and that's the way it looked. These things happen. You cannot just sit, sit and watch things occur. You've got to make sure that you're thinking about what's happening. What, when you think of our community, I think, I can't believe there's a person in this room that isn't totally proud of our community, we love it. What do we think about when we... What do we think about when we, when we think of our community? I think of the landscaping, I think of the, we don't live in castles, we know that, but what do we have? We have some continuity. And when, when you drive, just think about it, visualize this moment. You're at the corner of El Toro and let's say Paseo de Valencia, and you're going to drive west, being coming towards this building. What do you see? You see a beautiful road, you see a landscape, you see buildings here and there, but you don't see multi-storyed towering buildings blocking out the sun. You don't see that. And, and you think of the same, going the opposite direction, you think the same thing, don't you, from gate, I'm going to start at gate nine and come the other direction, and what do you see? You think about it, and that's, in general, that's what you're thinking you see. Think about the, going either way on El Toro, it's the same thing. So we don't want to, what we don't want to do is lose the value of our community, but how do we have continuity and, and change? Things are going to change over time. We'd all be living in Greek temples if things didn't change, they do change. And so it's not that we want, we're afraid of change, but we want to make sure it's change that's harmonious with what we have here. And so that's my concern, and I brought that up as we go forward. And I think with the new fire station, we want the fire station to fit what's here already, not some thing that's trendy and then it looks out of date and doesn't fit. So there's where we are.
So at the October meeting, we touched on objective design standards a little bit, and at Councilmember Moore's request, we have this item here today for, on one part, an update on what we're doing on the process, and then I do have some specific questions that I'd like to pose to the council until audience members present. But in terms of this particular project, so it is a significant work plan item that's funded in our existing budget and work plan, and it's specific to creating design and development regulations for new and redevelopment projects. Today, what we're talking about is commercial projects. So from a land use perspective, you have three different commercial zoning districts in the city. You have community commercial, which is most of your commercial property, think of that as like shopping centers. You have professional and administrative office, which are more, again, office buildings, things like the three-story medical building and town center. That's a professional administrative office building. And the neighborhood commercial, which is a lower scale commercial, I believe currently it's only applied to the Chase Bank at the corner of Valencia and El Toro. But these three zoning districts collectively comprise the totality of commercial property in the city. In your agenda report, I gave you some bullet points of what is commercial in Laguna Woods, just so we have a common frame of understanding, but for the general public, I'll say that there are commercial buildings scattered around, but for the most part, they are located in one of five shopping centers. So you have the Willow Tree Shopping Center, which is right here with Aldi and Dollar Tree. You have the Valencia Shopping Center at PDV and El Toro that has Mother's Market and CBS. You have the Home Depot Shopping Center. You have Town Center where the community center is. And then you have, what they're referring to right now is Plaza Laguna Woods, which is the self-storage shopping center at the corner of Ridge Route and Molton Parkway. I sometimes say that's where the Starbucks is, but the Starbucks is actually technically its own parcel and not a part of the shopping center, but that general area over there. There are other properties, right? If you drive around Laguna Woods, you see like Settleback Golf Cars was here today, they're a commercial property. The Artist Tree is a commercial property. The mortuary next to the Artist Tree is a commercial property. There's a dental building at the corner of Laguna Hills Drive and Paseo de Valencia, that even though it's identified as the Laguna Hills Dental Plaza, is very much in the city of Laguna Woods. The animal hospital, things like that. So think of it as non-residential buildings, but just to make it complicated for you, it's non-residential buildings except for Ivy at the Wellington, which used to be Las Palmas. That property is zoned commercial, it has been for a very long time. That's kind of the outlier where there is a residential use, but it's on commercial property. So we're not talking about inside Laguna Woods Village, we're not talking about San Sebastian Whispering Fountains, what used to be the Regency or Las Palmas. We're only talking about commercial property today. In your agenda packet, I included some background information on JZMK Partners, which is an architecture and land use planning company that we're planning to retain to provide technical assistance on the development of these design and development standards. JZMK has done a lot of very comparable work in South Orange County and in Orange County generally. They also do work internationally all over the country, but they in particular have experience developing objective design standards, which is to say that until recently, the kind of prevalent design review process in cities was very, very subjective. You would bring a developer into the city council chambers, they would present their project, the city council would say, I don't like it, you should do something different. The developer would change it, it would go back and forth, but it was highly subject to whatever the whims of the elected officials or appointed officials at the time were. Objective design standards have become more normal now for residential projects because of some changes in state law that limit how cities can review and approve higher density, lower income residential projects. In this case, what we're talking about is somewhat novel in that objective design standards don't, they're not widespread for commercial properties, but from staff's perspective, having a clear set of standards that we can uniformly enforce will be better for staff, it will be better for the community, and I say that collective of the city council who will get the types of projects that match the aesthetic that they have in mind, but it will also be better for developers who very often look to cities to provide some sort of guardrails or guidance or limits on what they're building. So we'll be able to provide a level of clarity that far outpaces the subjective design process that they are subjected to in many other jurisdictions. So the project itself, I want to just talk through kind of the initial steps. We are planning to work with JZMK to analyze some existing conditions, we're going to talk about that in a minute. For the rest, I'm sorry, that's December 2025, I'm not actually a year out, I promise. December 2025.
You're really planning ahead.
Yeah, this is a status report to say that check back in 12 months. So we're going to analyze the existing conditions in December. We are anticipating hosting a community workshop in January for the purpose of soliciting input from members of the public, leading up to a study session, a single meeting dedicated just to this topic with the city council, with our consultant, and with staff in February of 2026. That will be kind of a, a check-in point to see how many iterations of that we need to go through, or if we are maybe closer to a collective vision right off the bat and can move through this more quickly. When we talk about design and development standards, it really is a whole host of things, and I've listed some of them on the screen here, but it is looking at site design, it's looking at the orientation of buildings on a property, it's looking at pedestrian, bicycle vehicle access, parking areas, lighting requirements. You may notice that you go to some shopping centers and the parking lot is lit up like a football field, and you go to other shopping centers and there's one or two lights, but it's mostly dark. These design standards will provide some uniformity to that in establishing minimum lighting levels, standards for light poles, light fixtures, all of that. One of the most important parts, and I think this speaks to Councilmember Moore's comments introducing this item, height massing and articulation. It's difficult to outright prohibit tall buildings. It is often, in a legal sense, construed as a taking from the property owner, right? You're limiting what is otherwise their unlimited development potential, but you can do really interesting things with massing and articulation, requiring what, in the most simple terms, could be a big, flat, tall wall to be broken up and recessed, and every floor to not be the exact dimension of the floor below it. Things that, when coupled with orientation on the site, can give you the kinds of look that you have driving through the community where from public roads, you don't really see super tall buildings, even though we know that in Laguna Woods, we have 14-story towers, we have four-story garden villa buildings, including the parking levels, but you don't see that from the street partly because of the orientation on the site. So we can develop some standards there. There are standards related to the roofing, roofs of structures. Not every roof is constructed the same. There are flat roofs, there are pitched roofs, there are stylized roofs, so we can get into some of those details. Entrances to commercial properties is often a thing that's considered, and that's not just entrances to the sites themselves, but that's, do you have a single door on a flat wall leading to the lobby of the building, or do you have an arched surface with a recessed tile design and, you know, light sconces and things? There are ways to force some additional stylization on entrances to structures. Building materials is a big one, right? We've talked, I think, in many different forums over the years about stucco and red clay tile. Those are examples of building materials, and it is well within our means and ability to require the use of a certain type of material or materials, certain color schemes, color palettes, all of that is within our ability to adopt standards for. And then building details, that can range from, you know, maybe you don't want windows that are completely flush with the front of the building, maybe you want them recessed a bit, maybe you want darker window panes than the surface that's adjacent to it. There are things that are synonymous with certain architectural styles that it won't be this council creating it from scratch, it'll be, okay, we want more of a Spanish look, what type of design elements are customarily associated with Spanish architecture, and then funneling that into a set of regulations. So this isn't an exhaustive list. One of the things that's not up here, but I heard Councilmember Moore mention, is landscaping. We have standards around the efficiency of landscaping, and that drives some planting decisions. The Fire Authority also has regulations around flammability of certain vegetation palettes in certain areas, but what we're talking about is also layering into that, the idea that you might want more plentiful landscaping on the street-facing frontage of the site as opposed to putting it all on the interior out of public view. You might want more massing, and again, like articulation in landscaping, right? Maybe you don't want everything to be six inches off the ground, maybe you do want variety in heights. We can get into those sorts of discussions.
I was thinking even in that discussion should be the access to recycled water, which is a, certainly a different issue from the area that doesn't have it, because you can't have one size fits all, so I think that should be a, you know, keeping that in mind.
Absolutely. So there's a whole host of things that you can get into, and what I'll say off the bat is that design standards don't look the same jurisdiction to jurisdiction. There are things that some jurisdictions care about significantly more than others. And so we will start from a point, but we can expand and contract the regulations to capture whatever it is your vision is. So I don't want you to, I'm going to show you some examples from other jurisdictions in a minute here, but I don't want you to think like, oh, that's what our objective design standards are going to look like. We're going to create something that is specific to the wants and needs of this community, and that leverages things that have been done in other jurisdictions but is not beholden to that. So I want to give you an example, and this is from actually the city of Laguna Hills, and this is just kind of a snapshot of how they tackled this issue. So they've divided their city up into different areas, different neighborhoods. Their standards are specific to residential structures, but I'm using this as just an illustration of what they would look like. Certain portions of their residential developments are within a Spanish district. So their design standards for that section start with this narrative description of, this is what we mean by Spanish architecture, right? Because different people can talk about architectural styles and have a completely different image in their mind. In this case, they've built their description of Spanish architecture around the architecture of their city hall building, right, which is domes and arches and, they talk about it being Spanish revival, they talk about ornate architectural styles, they reference wrought iron railings, hand-painted tiles, they talk about multi-leveled low-pitch roofs with little or no overhang, they talk about open-air courtyards and outdoor living spaces and tower elements incorporated into the construction. They do mention colored clay tile roofs and clean white stucco. So this is meant to kind of set the stage for this is what we're trying to get to, which will help the developers understand what you mean by Spanish. From there, they break it down, and they've got architectural features. So this is an example of a Spanish-influenced residential development, and you can see it calls out things like the red clay tile roofs, recessed entrances, arches around the entryways, wrought iron railings, the same sort of roof details with limited overhang. These are things that their city council decided were important. You may or may not think all of these are important, you may not, for instance, want to see fabric awnings. They have fabric awnings identified in here. But this is, again, something meant to take that narrative that we just saw and break it down to kind of a representative sample of what it might look like. And then for each of those things, entryways, wall materials, roofs, there's specific guidance, and I'm going to show you one example of that. This is the guidance they provide for roofs within the Spanish style. There are required elements, they have, it looks like six or seven required elements, including certain slopes of the roofs, red fired clay tiles in certain shapes, either the S shape or the half cylinder, small decorative exposed tails on the roofing. So there's some things that every building has to do. And then below that, there are optional elements, which you can think of as a menu. There are, I think, five optional elements there, and developers are required to pick at least two of those to incorporate into their project. So it doesn't require that every single project have every single element identical to the one before it, but it requires kind of a common theme to be woven through it with respect to the required elements. And then it gives the designer of the project some flexibility to say, maybe I want to include multi-stepped or arched, or arc-shaped parapet walls, or maybe I don't, maybe I would rather include gabled roof lines on there. So it provides flexibility without allowing them to just ground up, do whatever it is that comes to mind. So this same level of detail would be created for building materials, windows and glazing, landscaping, that sort of thing, and you can either say, hey, we want everything on here, everything's required, or you can create this kind of menu approach where there's a, you know, choose your own adventure style building palette there. So we'll get into that in this process. Most jurisdictions, and again, most jurisdictions do this for residential, but most jurisdictions identify a couple of different architectural styles and assign them to portions of the city. Our assumption for this project, because of the limited land area of our commercial centers, is that we would select a single architectural style and apply it to all of the commercial property, as opposed to saying the things that are at Molton and El Toro would be Spanish style, but the things that are close to Ridge Route would be Mediterranean style. We're assuming for the sake of argument, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're assuming that we're creating a single kind of unified vision for the architectural style within commercial districts. So that's an example of all of that. There, before I get to this, let me, the next public step in this process is going to be a facilitated public meeting where members of the public outside of a formal council meeting can come in and share their thoughts about what they like, don't like, want to see, what their impressions of architectural styles that are favorably received in Laguna Woods might be. That will exist and take place prior to coming back to the council, so that when we come back to council, we'll be able to present you with a couple of data points. They'll be, this is what we heard from the community, this is what we saw when we went out in the community and looked at some key reference buildings, and this is what we saw when we looked at your commercial centers, what some of the prevailing architectural styles might be, what some of the more common design features might be, with an eye towards being able to get to this kind of bullet-pointed approach of, do you want to put these things in a required basket, in an optional basket, or do you not care at all? Or conversely, do you want to prohibit them, right? Are there things that you really just don't like and don't want to see? So we'll do all of that, we'll come back, and we'll have what I imagine will be a fairly lengthy meeting at that first study session in February to try to figure out if we're all on the same page, or if there's a kind of common unified direction we can go in. For the purpose of today's meeting, what I'm interested in is identifying specific buildings that would serve as reference points for both staff and our consultants. We're going to be taking We're going to be taking them on a tour, we're going to look at all the commercial centers, but I want to make sure that we point out buildings that have been received favorably. And for the purpose of this discussion, it's not important that you all agree. It's okay if one of you says, I like Clubhouse X, and the other says, well, I like Clubhouse Y. We're going to show the consultant both Clubhouse X and Clubhouse Y, so that when we come back and you start referencing these buildings, they've laid eyes on them and can talk credibly about it, right? So it's also okay if you don't have any particular things, but you just want to share that there are certain design types or architectural styles that appeal to you. I'm kind of just looking for that individual preliminary feedback with the understanding that it's going to go through many more iterations, and eventually, hopefully, everything will converge and will have a unified vision. So I've kind of phrased the same question two ways up here. What existing buildings are representative of a look or looks favorably identified with Laguna Woods? And again, we're talking commercial property, but you don't necessarily have to identify commercial buildings for me, right? If there are residential buildings that you think are particularly attractive and of a style that you would like to see woven through the commercial districts, that's perfectly valid feedback. And then put another way, what existing buildings speak to the aesthetic that is desired for commercial zoning districts? Again, individual opinions are welcome, we'll work to develop that collective vision in the coming months. Before we get into this, there is an opportunity for public comments on this item. Same questions can be posed to the public, happy to hear the feedback at this point. I just want to assure you all, though, that you will have an opportunity, without a three-minute time limit, at a community workshop to offer your thoughts with the consultant and them present. But we're also going to give the consultant the recording of this meeting so that they can hear some of this preliminary feedback. So you're more than welcome to share thoughts now, but please also, if you care about this topic, participate in the community workshops. I have no doubt you will, Catherine, but please feel free to share your thoughts.
Okay. Public comments open, hearing, sorry.
I'm really pleased to see the progress. Do you recall?
Is the mic on?
Is this on?
It doesn't sound like it.
I think the battery may have died, sorry. Yoli will swap out the battery.
I can talk loud enough, but that's okay. But I'm really pleased to see it. I'm thinking this, we should have had this one. When it became a city, would have been the time for us to have this kind of architecture so it really fit in with the whole village, that we really have planned a community that included not only all the houses, but the commercial areas too. And we can see, you know, because it was started in 99, I mean, the shopping center up here, Home Depot, that didn't even exist at the time. The administration building didn't exist at that time, because until the airport was defeated, none of that area had even been developed. And had we had the standards that we're talking about now in place, this city would really be a shining example of adequate planning overall, not only for all the houses, but for all the commercial area. And I think that's so important, because that then gives you a real identity that exists. I mean, one of the, you know, and it would help us overall, because we would then be recognized as a city that is, holds it together.
We are, we do hold it together.
Well, yeah. And I think, you know, so we've gone a long way, I think we've got some work to do. You know, if you recall, this all started when we talked about that medical building that's going to be built down there by the Wells Fargo Bank, and it's, they're getting ready to do some construction, and what a disaster. I think that, in my opinion, that's going to be when I saw the drawings for that. And you take a look, and from a commercial standpoint, I think the building down there with Mothers and CVS, if you take a look at it, as close as you can get, it has a Spanish style. It's not as true as what we might have from what you're showing here, because I don't think we all had that thought at the time. Now, I'm fundamentally very disappointed, though, the decision you guys made last month was for the mobile, for the mobile station here, not to insist that over the area over the pumps, if you go down and look at the 76 station, it's 20 feet, it's the height he wanted, and you'll notice that it has the clay tile roof over the pump area. And I'm fearful that what we're going to see, the mobile station, is going to be like the Shell station, except it's going to be blue and white, and it's going to be tall, and it's not going to fit in at all, other than the building itself, because it has the clay tile roof, and they're not changing that. And that was an opportunity to tell the architect, because he said, well, you can't do it. And he agreed, well, we'll put some columns in there and we'll make them look different. All he has to do is go half a mile down the road, or not even that far, and take a look at that 76 station. And it, and they managed to make sure that they have clay tile over the pumps as well as over the building. So that says to me that Laguna Hills at least was a little bit more paying attention to some of the design standards, as you implied, as you showed here. So, but thank you for taking and addressing this, I appreciate Carol bringing it up, because it was something that I felt that, as a city, we were lacking relative to holding the whole community together. Thank you.
I think I would comment, we could not demand something, we didn't have anything in place, that's our, was our problem. So I think he was nice enough to try to accommodate us, and then I happened to see him later, the owner, and he was, I thanked him again, and I, and because he didn't, we can't have rules and demand things when we don't have anything to support that. We would have been in court, I would think, on that one. However, he seemed pleased, and he seemed quite pleased that I had acknowledged his help and that he was going to try and make it look nice. So I think he's doing what he is, can do to help us, and I thought that was certainly more helpful than the situation across the street, where we approved something, that we approved, he told us at the time, he was going to have hand-washed cars, the whole thing changed and kept changing and changing, and we never saw it again. So whatever's there, we only saw something he told us, with a lot of change orders in between, which we don't even know about. And in my estimation, it looks like something you'd see in a truck stop on your way to Barstow. So I, this is, to me, it's critical that we get something in place and all understand what we want here and have something in place. So I don't think we're all going to agree, because, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but we can come to a general consensus that, in general, that we understand that you can't just do anything. So that's really our, and it would help you too, so that's the goal. Are there any other public comments?
Yeah.
I'm assuming the way you're talking, this is the city council, not the village council. And what you're talking about is applicable to the city, but it sounds like you also want to have influence in the village, the way you don't. Then I decline to comment any farther. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I grew up in New Mexico, Santa Fe early on had a standard, even McDonald's had to have kind of this Hispanic Southwest style of stucco and not be so glaring. I am really appreciative that this has been brought up, and I hope you'll advertise in the Globe or something to get more input, because now it's kind of a gas station town for ever glittery and fancier gas, three gas stations. How much is the consultant costing? And that's my question, thanks.
Sure. So the way we're anticipating structuring contract is an initial scope that gets us through the existing conditions, community workshop, initial study session, and some kind of background preliminary work product at that meeting. So that would take us through the end of February. We're expecting that that's probably going to be in the ballpark of around 30,000. And then we will have a check-in point at that point for the council to decide whether they're at a point where we can move forward with actually developing standards. We'll have a separate proposal for what gets us to the finish line of actually developing those standards, but some of that is going to be teased out during the community workshop and the initial study session. It's a very different scope of work if we're looking to develop a single set of unified design standards, or if we decide we want maybe Spanish and something else. And so I want to get a better sense of the direction we're going, and also how many of those design areas that we ran through, we actually want to tackle in the standards. There's an initial budget for this project, for $50,000 in the budget already, and so the initial kind of scope fits within that. Once we get through those initial meetings, we'll have an opportunity to see what the, what it takes to get to the finish line, and how much of that will be done by staff versus consultants. So I can't give you the full cost estimate, but I think 30,000 or so is the initial, like, get us to a point of being able to talk about getting to the finish line, so. All right, so I guess if there's no other public comments, then the question I have for council is what's up on the screen, but you can also think about it in terms of, I'm taking the consultant around to look at buildings, what do you want to make sure they look at? I've heard Catherine's suggestion about making sure we go to the Mothers Market Shopping Center, we're going to go to all of the commercial properties, so that's in there, but if there are specific buildings within commercial centers, or if there are non-residential buildings that you want to look at, or if there's just parts of centers that you want to say, I really like how that looks, I will make sure I point that out. So I'll throw that open to the mayor, how she wants to handle it.
Well, I want to, I would like everything to be ADA accessible. I would like wide enough sidewalks in there so that golf people can get there in their golf carts, and I want curb cuts so that people in wheelchairs and walkers can get to all these places. And I would like them to have bathrooms that are not just a big stall, but an electric door, so that people in a wheelchair can get in and out. And so I guess that was one of, that's just the first thing that comes to mind, besides all the design things, I'd like it to be accessible. Thank you.
Okay.
I think that's current law.
It's sort of kind of, I mean, private centers aren't held to exactly the same ADA standards as like true public property, but we, I think, I've seen examples in design standards of like over-wide sidewalks, right? Because letter of the Americans with Disabilities Act, you can go down to as small as a three-foot sidewalk, which is technically accessible, but I think what you're getting towards is functionally accessible, right? So I think that's a fair point, we can identify it. It's certainly relevant to our constituency and some of the demographic considerations.
Thank you.
What comes to my mind, just this city hall building, it looks, is very pleasing to my eyes when I see the building from the outside. So I like the looks of that. And if I went like behind the, inside, behind the gates in the village, I kind of like the look of Clubhouse Two. It's kind of another one that's different, but, you know, kind of a design that's kind of pleasing to my eye.
I think it's interesting that you bring that up, because we had to save that clubhouse, it was going to be demolished, and I find it one of the most lovely, too. It's interesting that you find it that lovely, because we had to save it, so there you go. And this is why we have these discussions.
Also, within the gates, I really like the 19 building across from Clubhouse Two.
Yeah.
And I've always envied the Laguna Hills City Hall.
I think it's beautiful, I agree. But I like ours, too.
Did you have any specific?
I think all the buildings that have been mentioned, I don't want to, I didn't, my intent was not to narrow and restrict people as much as it was to make what we do, I, how do I say, I keep using the word harmonious, but things can be eclectic, but they fit, and that's very vague, isn't it? Because you want to know, well, what do you consider fitting, when one person feels that some of the design that we know from the 60s that did not age well, we don't want that, we want kind of classic looks. And I think what you were, the buildings that you've named are buildings that have classic look. And privately, we have a building that, I don't want to name it, but it didn't age well. And it's, they've had trouble trying to decorate it, it's been a real problem. Take a look, even though I think the height of the San Sebastian's perhaps greater than I would have been in favor of, the San Sebastian ages well. Go inside it, and it does age well, and it's the same thing, when we say, when we were building the 19, because when we were sitting here, I was thinking about that, because there are a lot of differences of opinion on what is beautiful and what is attractive. So I, you know, you have to leave that open so that we accommodate a great number of ideas, because I don't want to, my intent is not to narrow that, but to leave it open, because people enjoy different colors, they find different designs attractive to them, and that's fine. But they should be, have harmony and be not in conflict one with the other. And I think that's what you see with 19 and Clubhouse Two are not exactly, because Two was actually older, although it was redone. When was Two done? Just about within the last, to me, it seems like a couple of years, but it's probably been at least seven. Anyway, whatever the time is, that we were trying to make sure with Two, that Two would look good then, because 19 had been, or the Village Greens, that we called it, had, was in the process of just having been completed. So, but you see how they do look good with each other. And you think about some of the other buildings, I think the ones, what did you name? I've forgotten, you named 19, City Hall, I think the City Hall, yeah, but see, look, they are, they're different, aren't they? And that's why you can have things that are harmonious, and that's really what I would hope we would wind up with.
Yeah, and I think you, I think you achieve that through kind of a core group of required components, and maybe that is stucco surfaces, predominantly stucco surfaces in lighter beige-white-type earth tones, and then the red clay tile roof, but then maybe you give people a broader option of the optional elements to choose from that allow them to do things like, certainly Laguna Hills City Hall is more ornate, right? It has a lot of finer details, it has the domed surfaces and things. Maybe those are options that people can do, but if they want a simpler building that gravitates more towards City Hall, then maybe they pick arched openings, tower elements, those sorts of things. So I think we can get there. I mean, that, it does not sound offhand, like the four of you are wildly apart on what you're looking for, but I will make sure we hit those locations. I'll include, to Councilmember Connor's comment, I'll include Laguna Hills City Hall as a representative example of something in the area that is still appealing to us, and make sure they lay eyes on them, and then we'll have a robust discussion about what they all have in common and what we want to require moving forward.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
As Councilmember Moore said, San Sebastian has kind of grown into itself with the landscaping and the window treatments and so forth, and it's, originally it was just this square-white box, and it was pretty appalling, but it looks much better now. The former Bank of America building, the Wells Fargo building on Valencia, is, has some good architectural elements to it. I believe it has a tile floor in the entryway, which is lovely and historic and evocative, but also maybe difficult for people using walkers, stuff.
Changed it when they did, I went down there when they, I'm always very nosy, I went when they were in the middle of constructing, and I think they actually put different tile in there. I don't know how extensive, but they were doing it.
It's probably more difficult for people with walkers, but it looks nice, so.
Okay, we'll add that to the list as well. All right, that's the feedback I was looking for today. Like I said, we'll, we will certainly widely advertise the community workshop in January, and then we'll probably, honestly, probably at your next meeting, we'll talk about scheduling for that meeting in February for the study session.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to city council reports and comments. This is the time and place for members of the city council to provide reports on me-
This is the time and place for members of the city council to provide reports on meetings attended, including but not limited to, meetings of regional boards and entities to which they voted to represent the city of Laguna Woods, and meetings attended at the expense of the city of Laguna Woods pursuant to California Government Code Section 53232.3. Members of the city council may also make other comments and announcements. The Coastal Green Belt Authority is first up. Mayor Protem McCary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Coastal Green Belt Authority did meet last week, and while there were not a lot of partner participation, the majority of the meeting was dedicated to the agenda item regarding the city of Laguna Beach considering the construction of a bike pump track at a location adjacent to Alisa Woods and Canyon Wilderness Park. And it has caused a lot of disturbance because this is part of the Coastal Green Belt and is part of Wildlife Preserve. And the city is actually considering this bike pump track. And if they consider it, it sets a precedent for giving up some of the dedicated land and property. And so at the meeting two months ago, the people that were in favor of this bike pump track came in and voiced their support for it, and they wanted the council, the authority, to support the position. And the authority is considering writing a letter to the city of Laguna Beach saying, we are opposed to giving away part of dedicated land to, it just sets a precedent, and we don't want to do that. So at the last meeting, which was last week, members of the public that live in, actually live in the city, came out and voiced their opposition. And they're really encouraging the authority to write a letter opposing Laguna Beach actually being willing to give this up. So it's an ongoing process, but the authority hasn't made a public position as of yet. So it's an ongoing process, and we anticipate, we would, the authority is asking the city of Laguna Beach to, before they make a decision, that they bring all of their information to the authority and make a presentation to the authority so that we can make our own recommendation. The other event that was significant in terms of the parks, the Laguna Coast Wilderness Park gave an update on mountain lion sighting that was in the area of Whiting Ranch, which is in Lake Forest. So there was a sighting of a mountain lion. It was apparently a young lion, and it didn't charge at anyone, but there's actually, you can go on YouTube and Google, and you can see the actual mountain lion. And actually, it followed people for a little while, and then they kind of shushed it away. But as of now, as of that last meeting, the park was still closed, and there weren't any attacks made, but the park is still closed, and the mountain lion sighting is there. So they're really encouraging people to be aware of mountain lions in that area and to not hike or travel alone in those areas. So more to come on that. And those were the two major discussions at that meeting.
Thank you. Okay, the Orange County Fire Authority. All we had last week, last month was a closed session, but I do have a report on the emergency control center received 19,890 calls in October for 15,100 incidents in our service area. That's an average of 487 incidents a day, a slight increase year over year. We dispatched the appropriate response in 00.52 seconds, which is 12 seconds faster than the national standard. Our year-to-date total response time is 8.27, 90% of the time, which is three seconds faster than the recommended benchmark put forth in OCFA's standard of coverage. Our dispatchers and firefighters matched the efficiency of their response times with on-scene poise and excellence across a wide range of multi-hazard incidents, as reflected in some of the most red print articles published in October. And as we know, that magic five minutes, when they need to get there, that they can make the most difference in your health. So that's the only report I have for the Fire Authority. So Orange County Library Advisory Board, Councilmember Moore.
I would have pointed out that we finalized the exit of Irvine from the Orange County Public Library System at their loss because of, the Orange County Public Library System has a tremendous inventory of books. And so for them to pull out, well, it did help the Orange County Public Library in the sense that they didn't give them the 28. We've talked about that before. Part of that money is now used for a reserve so that there is a schedule for the updating of the libraries, because the libraries do, the carpet wears out, things have to be changed, and of course, technology changes, too. So I just want to point out some of the things that our library is doing. I don't know how much you use this library, but I use it a lot, and I'm a reader, and I think they do a fantastic, I know they do a fantastic job. They have brought in a number of really top-notch authors that have spoken, generally speaking, it's been at, because they have the space for it, at the Laguna Hills Community Center, which is down there on Alicia, I think. And I mean, very well-known authors. So they're doing that. They have homework assistance, they help with your phone. People who tend to want to be librarians tend to be people who like helping others anyway. So you wind up with a group of people who are there, ready to do all kinds of things. And of course, they have book clubs and all kinds of speakers. So that's what's going on with the library.
Thank you. Okay, our Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, Councilmember Lee is not here, so we'll get it next month. So we come to the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency, Councilmember Connors.
Thanks. I have, oh, first I want to comment on two things. The report on the Coastal Green Belt Authority sort of illustrates the conflict that lands management agencies have, whether you're going to pave something over to provide a particular kind of a recreation opportunity, or whether you're going to preserve open space that has maybe, well, certainly different, like hiking and biking and so forth, for people to recreate, but also has conservation and preservation elements attached to it. And how do you weigh those two things against each other? So that's an interesting conundrum. The other one was about the librarians. I had occasion, I had some time between events, and I decided to spend it with my laptop in the library. And I was there for about an hour. And I heard the librarians give this friendly greeting to 30 or 40 people who came in the door, and they were, they were so pleasant, and they were so happy to help, and they were so eager to engage with the public. I thought, that is a personality tie.
It is.
Yeah. Okay, for the toll roads. First, we had a clean audit, which is always a good thing. A clean audit doesn't happen by accident. It happens by careful adherence to standards and policies and meticulous attention to detail, and so I was glad for that. The next thing is our contract with the California Highway Patrol for toll enforcement services. The toll roads are state roads, and they're maintained by Caltrans, and they are patrolled by the CHP. But in addition, we pay a certain number of overtime hours for CHP officers to cruise our roads and look for people who have obliterated license plates or no license plates, or other things where they may be trying to evade paying tolls. And so the officers who are on patrol have the ability then to see people who avoid the cameras or otherwise avoid toll paying. And the revenue that comes in from that is greater than what we pay to the CHP.
Really?
Yeah, so that's a good thing. And the third thing is, there is a thing called a Habitat Conservation Fund. And that started when the toll roads was trying to extend the 241 toll road down to connect with Interstate Five in the vicinity of San Clemente. They looked at a green alternative that ran along the foothills and into Camp Pendleton, and then came along the creek and joined the five there. But the surfers at the trestles were violently opposed to that. They were convinced that all of the building and dredging was going to interfere with the underground geography that makes the trestles such a great place for waves. And so then we were looking at going through the city of San Clemente, and there was enormous opposition to that. And it happened before my time, pretty much. So I don't know exactly how it happened, but somehow, we agreed not to do what they didn't want us to do, and to put $26 million into a conservation fund. And I thought that was a, well, anyway, I wasn't involved. But now we're looking at spending some of that money, and they have a board of the Save San on Ophrey Coalition, and the toll roads, and a number of environmental agencies that look at selecting land for purchase, or for rehabilitation, or for lease, or for grant money. And one of the ones they're working on now is the cactus wren, here in the Laguna Coast Wilderness Area. So the cactus wren is a little endangered bird, and it puts its nest inside these big masses of prickly pear, and that's what protects it from predators. And this little bird will not fly if it can't see its own cactus. So it goes up in the air, and it can't see any cactuses around it, and it just comes back down again. And so there are two disparate areas where the wrens live, and in between them is a ridge, and they never get from one to the other. So now there's a plan to spend a few thousand dollars of this habitat money to plant a whole bunch of cactus at the top of this ridge. And after it grows up and gets nice and thick, then the wrens can go from that to the ridge top, and then they can look over and see the other one, and then they can, it's a cactus wren corridor.
Oh, wow.
Nice.
So that's all I got.
Thank you. You got me interested in the cactus wren.
Really?
Before I even got on council.
On the internet.
Okay, South Orange County Watershed Management, Councilmember Moore.
I'm not going to come on the watershed at this time. We have a very long meeting, but I think I will bring up some issues that are pertinent to the water industry, so at a later time. Thank you.
Okay. The Laguna Woods Community Bridge Builders had a wonderful event at the beginning of this month. They had like 12 different dance troupes, all different nationalities interspersed with food. And then there was general dancing, and we all danced, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event. I was very happy to get out and see so many people. I hadn't had a chance to do that for a long time. Councilmember Connors was there, too. Would you like to say anything about that?
It was just a good time had by all.
Okay, good time had by all. So we come to other comments and reports.
I do have one.
I know.
Over the weekend, I went with the mayor to present a proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary of, 100th birthday of one of our relatives. And that's one of my favorite things to do because we just did caregiver appreciation. And this is kind of the flip side of that. All around us, there are people getting sick and going into assisted living and passing on, but there are also people living rich and full lives into their past 100. And this gentleman had been an engineer, and he worked on the Apollo moon craft and was responsible for getting its design so that when it landed, it would stay with the wide end floating instead of tipping upside down with the wide end on top, which is always good for the survival of the astronauts. And he also worked on the space shuttle, in particular, on the landing parachutes that deployed to help slow down the aircraft, to make sure they wouldn't get yanked off, or they wouldn't divide the aircraft in half, and they would provide sufficient slowing and so forth. And so when you have people who have lived a long life, they've often done a lot of things, and we don't necessarily know what those are. But I just wanted to point this out because the family members were just really pleased that the city showed up to give this man some recognition. And I want people to know that we do that, and actually, we all love to do that. So just let us know.
He had a huge family, and some even came down from San Francisco. Just a beautiful, yes, very rainy day, lovely, lovely event. So.
Before, I'm sorry to interject, and I'm sorry to do this. We need to revisit Item 9.1 very briefly, which involves the mayor accusing herself again.
Okay.
It should not take very long, but thank you for indulging me.
I don't think so, Bruce, not today.
I know. I heard that it was a long meeting, and I was like, oh, gosh, I hate to do this. Okay, so we're back to Item 9.1, and this is a consequence of me checking my email once I finished with presentations. We had submitted a draft of the resolution that you approved, or you adopted earlier, related to the Surplus Land Act to HCD for advance review. We did not receive the results of that review until just now.
Oh.
They would like one sentence added to the resolution. And so I will walk you through what that is.
Okay.
But the timing is good. It will hopefully speed this along. So.
It shows they listen.
And so they, they're specifically requesting findings related to a government code section. And essentially, what they're looking for is us to add a sentence saying that the property that we're contemplating leasing is not one of these four things. The first is within a coastal zone. It's not within a coastal zone. The second is, it's not adjacent to a historical unit of the state park system. It's not. Third is that it's not listed on or determined by the State Office of Historic Preservation to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And then the last is, it is not located within the Lake Tahoe region as defined by a different section of government code. So safely, we can agree to all of this. So what we will need to do, assuming that you're amenable to those changes, we are, I'll put up two different things. We're proposing to add that sentence to the end of Section Three in the resolution, so I've crudely typed it in here, but we would add a sentence that reads, "None of the characteristics listed under California Government Code Section 54221 Subsection F Subsection 2 apply to the premises." And as part of this procedurally, because you unanimously approved the resolution earlier, our recommendation would be to rescind the resolution previously adopted as part of Item 9.1 at today's meeting, and adopt a resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, declaring the portion of the real property commonly known as City Center Park, located at 24121 Molton Parkway, Laguna Woods, California, 92637, Orange County Assessor's Parcel Number 61601218. That would be leased to the Orange County Fire Authority for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a new fire station and for public safety purposes. To be exempt to public land, as that phrase is defined in the California Surplus Land Act, as amended to include, or as amended to add the following sentence at the end of Section Three. None of the characteristics listed under California Government Code Section 54221 Subsection F Subsection 2 apply to the premises." There is an opportunity for public comment. I'll note that there are no members of the public still with us today, but I would welcome a recommendation as set forth on the screen.
I move we rescind the resolution previously adopted as part of Item 9.1 at today's meeting and adopt the amended resolution as amended to add the following sentence to the end of the Section Three. None of the characteristics listed under California Government Code Section 54221 F2 apply to the premises.
Thank you.
As to rescission and readoption, I second the motion.
All right.
There's no discussion?
So all in favor? It's unanimous?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Perfect. That is all that we needed to do, so we will invite the mayor back into the room. She should be coming back. I think she's watching.
Good thing they caught that.
Yeah. All right.
Good thing you checked your email.
Yes, yeah, he has that open.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Okay, so.
No closed sessions?
Okay, well, okay, so, my gavel. Thank you. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned till Wednesday, December 17, 2025, at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.